Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, first on our agenda is the approval of the amendments from the September 8, 2014 meeting. Any questions or changes to those amendments?
I'd make a motion to approve the amendments as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Thank you. Current expenses as of 9/18. I think you've had a chance to those are emailed to you. Anyone have any questions for Renee or anyone else?
The whole Brooklyn one for the five, the fees out for the audit.
Yeah.
Has that been done then?
They're not, they're just about ready to be finished up. They're waiting on one of the vendors to get back with them.
Motion to approve the expenses. Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Well, I think we can move through the reports rather quickly since the mayor isn't here and I know personnel finance wanted to talk more toward the end of the meeting so, and solicitor isn't here, so the reports should go rather quickly. Chief?
I just have a couple items. I attended a Madison County Community Action Domestic Violence Collaboration Board. So, community action is now getting involved in the Madison County areas particularly with dealing with domestic violence and helping with shelters in Madison County. So, that'll be a good new collaborative effort that's starting there. I also attended Union County Advisory Board Meeting and Officer Connor has started his field training. So, he's about a week into that now. And I forwarded an email for trick-or-treat recommendation to everyone, so I was going to ask for that to be discussed. My recommendation to council, like I said in my email, is to follow the Morpsey Guidelines. They put out a recommendation for the next five years on September 18th. And the dates are included in that email for the recommendations through 2019 on trick-or-treat. And Morpsey, and as I had mentioned before, there's a whole host of reasons why I particularly feel it's important not to have a lot of pedestrian traffic out and our kids out on any Friday, Saturday, or Sundays doing trick-or-treating. So, and after I saw the recommendations from Morpsey, I was glad to see that their dates coincide with those recommendations. So, I would ask for council to please consider that and we can get that date set on our calendar going forward for the next five years.
Did you come up with rain dates as well?
No, no rain dates. And it's also a recommendation from Morpsey that it's rain or shine.
Okay.
Yes.
Just shine, right?
Yes.
Yeah, what's the pleasure of the council? Do you guys want to?
I like the concept of having something fixed where we, as council, don't have to worry about jockeying the dates around each year. It gives a little bit of stability. So, I'd make a motion that we approve the chief's recommendation to use the Morpsey schedule.
A second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And that's all I have to report on tonight.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. What did you administer here?
The two will keep it brief. Just want to thank the Lions Club last weekend. They did quite a bit of work to the walking path at Pastime Park. And it looks very nice. The work that they did was very professional, very neat. Cleaned up after themselves and we appreciate all their efforts. The only other thing is since Mr. Lafayette is gone, I believe he will want to have an executive session for pending legal matters. That's all I have.
Nothing from me from President Pro Tem. But as far as park goes, the park committee will meet here in this building on Wednesday at 6:30 PM. So, if you have some of my thoughts or agenda items you'd like to hear us discuss or talk to Jim or myself or let us know. Solicitor not here. Planning and zoning?
Yes, we met Wednesday and we are still reviewing the alternative energy. Solicitor is trying to get us some more information on that. And he's also, has given, or is sending us some documentation on the other ordinance that we wanted us to review. And then we approved the development name for.
Collaborate.
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 So, it's.
A little subdivision?
Yeah.
It's approved?
No, not yet.
Was it approved?
No, that was just preliminary.
Preliminary were approved.
Okay.
And this is the old Fox Hollow property.
He has some changes to make that we made recommendations and they're coming back to file. I think he's going to come to council first.
He would, he still has to submit his final site plans for review.
That was it.
Thank you. Easy eight?
Nothing happening there.
CIC, is there any?
I do. We have a meeting next Tuesday and Union County isn't for a while yet.
As I mentioned, personnel finance, we maybe talked about that in the last part of the meeting. Is there anything, Mr. Walter, you'd like to talk about now or just kind of hold?
No.
All right, we'll do that in a minute. Fire, anything, Jim?
Fire, there's a lot going on at the fireplace. This last meeting, we had a resolution for $5,007 to buy a new cot. Because our university's growing cotton, starting to go bad. And we got a grant for that money, which was really good. And we have a resolution for $988 for the oxygen maintenance. Have to come in and check things out. And last month I had 35 runs and 85 EMS. And a lot of those EMS is to the senior citizens in the retirement center out there. People falling and hanging up and stuff like that. In their last month, Brent said they spent $771 on maintenance and $1,800 on fuel. That's quite a bit of money. And the chief wants to, wanted to thank council and Kevin for letting out a space down at the treatment plant to park a couple old cars they're going to tear up. In October, we're going to have to open a house and everybody always come tonight because usually they got a lot of stuff to snack on. And that's about it.
Thank you. Upco, Mr. Rucker, did you want to say anything to that?
Just real briefly, I'd like to announce that Upco did award their facade improvement grants for this year. 1,500 went to Eric here for his wonderful work on the Runwell Grill Building. And then another 500 went to the church next door for their work on their steps. Also, don't forget Run Walk is this Saturday. We need volunteers. Please be there by about 7:00 at the youth building. Don't roll your eyes at me, Ms. Perkins. 7:00 is not that early.
It's still all the night.
But yeah, we'd love to have as many volunteers as we could, so feel free to come on out. Thank you.
Thank you. The old business item, it seems that's pretty benign. Perhaps we could just get through that and move on to maybe slightly difference of opinion and maybe need to do some more. So, the second reading ordinance, 614, the food bond refunding. Did anyone have any problem with voting on that now or any issues? Seems pretty.
I'm going to push, will you approve the second reading of ordinance 614?
I'll sign it.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to now move into new business with our visitors from the Department of Wildlife and Natural Resources and they're representing both Madison County and Union County. So, they've got a chance maybe to talk to us a little bit about some of our questions we might have. They brought some various traps and they can kind of enlighten us on some things that we might be in the dark about. So, I'll turn it over to them for their talk. And then when they're finished, we can, can listen to any comments there might be on our list from folks in the audience who want to speak specifically on this agenda item and then we can begin our discussion. So, I'll turn it over to the wildlife.
Where's the best place for us to address council, sir?
Kind of right here in the middle. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll go ahead and do a brief introduction. My name's Josh Shields, county, or the state wildlife officer assigned to Union County. This is Matt Teeters. He's a state officer assigned to Madison County. Also, I brought with me Mary Beth Agrezyk from Union County. She's Union County dog warden. Just as a, if I had to defer her for any domestic related questions. Matt's more familiar with the situation that we're dealing with here, so I'm going to kind of let him take the lead and hopefully we can answer any questions that you might have.
We'll just get those out of there. All right, like I said, my name's Matt Teeters. I'm a Madison County wildlife officer. I was the one who initially dealing with some of this. So, basically what we want to cover today is just basically who we are, what we do. So, we're state wildlife officers. We have jurisdiction on fishing, hunting, trapping firearms, basic conservation organization or conservation ordinances. So, here, we're basically the, so to go to experts when it comes to trapping on this one. What we brought here today, as soon as I get them out, is just a variety of different live traps. These are all considered live traps. There's different types of live traps and we'll go over basically what each one of these are. And I know some of you guys might not be familiar with these, so we'll just go over some basics. This is considered a cage trap. This is a box trap. These are live trapping methods. You open the doors up like this, this trip pan in the center. Usually put some type of bait on there. Depending on what species you're going for is what type of bait you have on there. So, if you're going for, this is too, too small of a trap. They come in different sizes. If you're going for raccoons, you want to do some type of like a wet cat food or dry cat food or something like that. Possums, typical want to go with like a marshmallow apple, something like that. So, you basically got to know what type of bait to use for what animal you're going for. But this is one of those, this is just a passive trap that just operates. Animal comes in, doors drop. It's alive, it's well. If you get what we call like a bycatch, say you do catch something that you don't want, you just open the doors, dump it out. So, when it comes to certain species that we covered, say like your raccoons, skunks, possums, fox, coyotes, chap, like those, those animals are what we consider rabies and distemper vector species. So, those animals can carry rabies, they can carry distemper. So, we do not allow for there to be relocated. So, if you do catch one of those, they either have to be euthanized or released on site. Now, talking to Chief Hill, we've talked many times about this, but when we're talking euthanasia, it doesn't have to be, they can be transported, so there's no firearms discharge. So, it can be transported outside of city limits. You know, say you got a friend who has a farm out in the country, it can be euthanized out there. You can either leave it out there, just bury or put the carcass out for trash or bring it back and do it yourself. So, the next style trap, now this, this is the style of trap that, this is unlike it says everywhere, this is actually a foothold. This is a double coil spring foothold. This is one of the smaller footholds, but basically, I don't really want to set here, but. So, this would be the trip pan. This is bury. They set on, they stuff on this. Now, these have to be according to law. They have to be set in a shallow depression. They have to be buried. So, there's a lot of our regulations and this is what they considered, and everybody here, the highly regulated industry, everybody know what that term comes from. Fishing, hunting, trapping is considered by the Supreme Court a highly regulated industry. So, they have lots of regulations they have to follow. So, it comes down to the number of swivels on a trap. Because if an animal gets his foot stuck in here, it should be able to move around and swivel without damaging its foot. These are actually designed to take fur-bearing animals. The goal of taking a fur-bearing animal is to present the fur to the fur buyer in as pristine shape as possible. If the fur gets damaged, if the animal is injured, they take money off the fur. So, these are actually designed to be safe, humane to the animals because in there, it affects the value of the fur.
So, it's a method of live capture.
Yes.
I don't know if everybody knows that or not, but it is, it is a method of live capture.
This, yeah, this is, so if you get a bycatch in this, you can pull it out, let the animal loose, might have a sore foot, but it's running away. Another thing, another type of foothold, this is actually called a foot encapsulating device or dog-proof trap. This is considered an egg. It's buried. You put a piece of bait in here. You bury it in the ground. Raccoon sticks his hand down inside of it to get the bait out. And it's like a mousetrap. It comes in there, traps his, traps his leg inside there. I mean, if you guys want to pass these around, take a look at them, I don't know if anybody's ever looked at some of these traps. But the good thing about some of our regulations with our traps are actually to prevent accidental catches. You know, they all, you know, the commonest attempt, it can break your arm, these type of traps. They're set in such a way, there's regulations in place that that shouldn't happen. Now, is there occasion where someone, something like this might happen? Yes, but did they break an ordinance that was already in place?
And, you know, we're obviously a pro hunting, trapping agency. The, the things that, you know, I think we try to take into consideration when our laws are developed is past history, but also well as common sense application and what's enforceable in the field. So, I think that's something that we're real careful about doing. Some things, you know, you just can't make a law for every type of situation and you have to use some discretion in the field as, as a law enforcement officer. So, you know, that, that's one thing that, you know, I caution you to consider.
That's actually going to come across. Right underneath there.
Like that, that's it? Can you leave it like that?
Okay, cool.
Let's leave it like that. I want to set it off.
Nope.
Why not?
We're not going to do that right now.
It won't hurt me, right?
I've got my fingers in it right now. I don't want to keep it set.
So, you're saying animal's leg can get out from there without being injured? Because these don't, when it's, it's up, don't go any further than like a millimeter or two apart.
Mm-hmm.
How is that not going to hurt an animal?
What's your definition of, I guess, hurt? When you put handcuffs on some, on a guy?
Would you put your finger in there?
I just did. You just seemed to.
No, you wouldn't even set it.
This dog is a, it's a wild dog.
No, I want this set.
This, this dog is a wild dog.
We're not going to set the trap.
I had a dog in a trap like that.
And put anybody's hands in it.
I don't want you to get hurt without experience on this trap. If you don't know how to set it, you can't.
That's why I asked you to do it.
That's okay.
So, this is a separate trap here, a small wire? Or is this the same kind of a float trap?
This is, this is also another type of live trap. It's a snare. You set it, the animal walks through. This is, it pulls tight, then you come out and remove it. So, this usually gets caught around their upper body and their torso. It's considered another live trapping. If you want the animal removed, cut it, let them go. So, these are all live trapping options. These are all legal. Now, there is a chapter out there called Ohio State Trappers Association. They're, they are the go-to experts on all this. This is where their passion is. These are set for recreational trapping. The big issue now in all these cities is nuisance wild animals. I used to work as a nuisance wildlife trapper before I came into this organization, so I'm fairly familiar with it. If you, the potential for an ordinance to be passed, preventing some trapping is going to be fairly detrimental in the long term because you are removing different options for people to remove nuisance animals from their property. City Columbus, big issue with nuisance wild animals. Different traps for different methods. You know, some, some raccoons might not like to go in a box style trap. They're, they're educated. Placing a foothold trap nearby is your better option. This, you can only use during like in a fence or other, some type of scenario like that where they're actually passing through.
So, all of these traps, if you catch something you don't want, you have the option of letting it loose. All of them provide that option?
Correct.
If you catch something you do want and it's not the box trap, but it's the other three options there, inside a village like this, really the only way is blunt trauma to the head usually is what takes the animal out.
According to AVMA guidelines, which is the American Medical Veterinary Association guidelines, there's, there's different guidelines as far as, you know, for free or any wild animals. And of course, we're going to talk different than companion animals. Wild animals are different. It's, it's a very unique guidelines for euthanasia of them. They can't, it's not clinical. You're not in there with sodium pentothal and everything like that, like a veterinarian would. Couple different ways are inert gases such as carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide. You do, they do talk about captive bolt and gunshots. And the other one is more, other ones is start risk, strangulation, circle dislocation, and thoracic compression are your other options. But by and far.
And that, and those aren't law, those are.
Guidelines.
Well, recommended guideline.
But.
So, there's no regulation on how the animals to be killed?
No. Typically, it is gunshot. If you're out trapping in a, if you're running a trap line during season, it's, it's a, usually a 22 caliber gunshot.
Small caliber.
Small caliber gunshot. And according to AVMA guidelines, you know, you're looking for the brain stem for that instant. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to cause the animal suffer. None of us are here. You know, we don't like animals to suffer. That's why we're here. These traps are designed, like I said, to keep the fur, what they call prime. You don't want to injure the animal because by law, you have to check them every 24 hours. You have to come back, make sure. There are chances like down in Southern Ohio where there are bobcats caught in box sets. So, you're going to be able to get their, you know, bobcats are still threatened. You need to be able to go out there and release your bobcat, so.
And, and, you know, trappers are a very, they, they take a lot of pride in, in their sport and, and, and the recreational opportunity that they're provided. You know, most trappers, you know, you're not going to have any problems with. Where we do run into troubles is in towns, people who aren't necessarily have experience and a lot of past experiences or would even consider themselves professionals or experts that are trying to take care of a situation that maybe they don't really know how to take care of. So, you know, education can go a long way in certain instances like that. I think, I think we have to be careful not to, not to mix up what we're talking about here. I mean, the, the problem is if you have a problem with a nuisance animal and you take away an ability to remove it, you're going to, you could potentially create a long-term problem with overpopulation and disease issues and more human wildlife conflicts that can arise from, from such an action like that. So, and that's just kind of just our two, our two cents in our agency stance is to, we have laws in place to give people the opportunity, especially on their own properties, to deal with those situations. You know, if, you know, there's a legal, there's already a legal set of guidelines in place for them to legally do that. I guess that would just be our caution is to not over-regulate it to create an issue. That's, that would be my only caution to the council. Well, yes, sir.
I have a question. On the leg hold traps, the snare, the vise grip there and the other one.
The foothold?
Yeah. The, you said that, you talked about releasing the animal. If you've got an animal trapped, are you going to get close enough to release that trap? I mean, how do you do that?
Either, there's two different ways. You can use the snare pole. You come up, grab the snare on the head, put the head to the ground, and then usually you just step.
Okay.
Here and here, just come in.
So, there's a way to do it.
Or a Y-shaped stick. If you have a stick with a crotch in it, just go ahead and pin the animal's head down. Step on them, they'll pull their arm right out.
Okay. You want the other question on that, release to skunks? What do you do?
Skunks are a sensitive topic because obviously there's, there's a deterrent there to deal with them.
And by law, you, you have to check your trap and dispose of the animal in the trap every 24 hours. So, we're, we come into some issues and we write citations on this as people who, they don't want to deal with the trap, they'll leave the skunk in the trap and just, so they go to go see the judge. If you don't want to deal with yourself, you can call a nuisance wildlife trapper. They'll come out, they get paid, they'll charge you more because obviously it's a skunk. So, they'll come out and they usually, they'll euthanize it for you if you don't want to euthanize it yourself.
According to city code, so they wouldn't use a gun city limits?
Well, they usually remove it, bring it back to their facility.
Okay.
And euthanize it there where they're set up to, to do that.
And, and because there's, it's unlawful based on your city warrants to discharge a firearm within the village or in the city limits, you know, you can't take some of these animals to other properties and release them, but there is an option still to remove the animal to be euthanized outside of the city limits. So, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, that is a viable option in, in situations where you're not going to be able to discharge a firearm in the city limits.
In all the traps you're seeing right now, these are all live trapping options. There's, there's another trap out there called the body gripping trap. That, that is a. I don't know if you just normally carries that around now. We didn't bring anything because those, those are, those are fatal traps. So, there's a lot more regulations on those as it pertains to how you can set them, where you can set them, certain size restrictions. Anything over five inches in diameter needs to be actually set in water to avoid domestic animals because domestic animals normally don't go through water. Certain other ones, they make a, they call a conibear 330. It's set for beaver to swim through. They're about that big. Those have to be completely submerged underwater.
So, what are the laws that regulate around those traps? If somebody's not using them properly, you know, can somebody just call you guys and say, hey, my neighbor's not using it right?
Yeah, there's three different ways to call us. I mean, you, if you look at the hunting regulations, all of our phone numbers for every single county in Ohio is listed in our hunting regulations that are found online. You can call the sheriff's officer here, Plain City PD, Jim's got direct access to us.
We work, we work in conjunction with every other law enforcement agency across the state in our respective counties. I mean, we're, we are the go-to subject matter experts when it comes to wildlife and anything that has to do with, and even some things we don't even have authority to deal with, like in some cases snakes and, you know, and lions. A lot of stuff that we don't even, people come to us for anything related to animals in most cases. So, you know, if we don't know how to deal with it, we can at least refer them to somebody who does have the authority to deal with it, so.
Another hypothetical, assuming that this set of traps would give property owner 100% option, one way or another, using a combination of one or the other, his ability to, to trap the animal, highly likely. If we took away the leg hold trap, what would we drop his probability of being successful?
The two main traps are the leg hold and box trap.
Okay.
These are just starting to come out.
They're specific to raccoons.
They're specific to, they're called, considered a dog-proof trap, so.
And it, it's a leg encapsulating trap. Really, the only animal that they're targeted with is raccoons.
Okay.
So, if, if you're looking at a fox or a skunk, a possum, I mean, a lot of those animals are, especially an older animal who's been around a block of time or two, are going to be a little, they're going to be hard to catch in this. So, if you, if you limit them to just using this box trap, I do, I do feel that you would be limiting somebody's ability to, to deal with the situation.
Okay.
Uh, and I've, I've seen it firsthand as being a nuisance trap before, I've seen them eat my bait all the way up, eat the bait from here, turn around and walk out, or back up. They're, they're smart, they get big, they get fat for a reason, so. Do it, you know, when you said a hundred percent and do this, do the whole range of options.
Like I said, it was a hypothetical, I just want.
Um, with a whole array of traps, there's only, there's, I brought four different traps, there's five different types of traps. You would have the fifth, that would give you the prototypical one hundred percent chance.
Now, I kinda have just kinda broke this down into something that's kinda easy to understand, if you'd like me to run through that real quick. As far as what species you can new, are considered nuisance and what all your, are your available options are to, to handle them.
Okay.
If you'd like me to run through that real quick. Um, animals that can't be considered, they can be considered nuisance, but you can't kill without first contacting the divisional wildlife would be deer, geese, waterfowl. Turkey, bear, bobcat, and raptors. Some of those animals can be considered nuisance, but like for geese and deer, we have a, a whole different avenue of approach for dealing with nuisance deer and geese. Um, the other animals are endangered or protected by other, other avenues of law. Um, an animal that can be shot or trapped any time of the year, and this is only in a nuisance situation, mind you. Would be a raccoon, a muskrat, a beaver, a squirrel, a chipmunk, groundhog, mole, blackbird, crow, mice, shrews, bulls. Possums, rats, skunks, coyotes, and fox. Um, any time of the year, once deemed a nuisance. Um, can be trapped any time of the year if a nuisance, but if trapped, they must be euthanized or released on sight. Would be raccoon, skunk, possum, fox, coyote, and beaver, okay? Um, can be trapped any time of the year if a nuisance trap, if a nuisance, but if trapped, can be euthanized or relocated. Now, this means relocated as in you have permission to release the animal onto another piece of property. Would be a squirrel, chipmunk, groundhog, or mole. Everything else, um, if considered a nuisance, is trapped any time of the year, can be relocated outside of similar, city limits with the landowner's permission.
So rabid is a lot of trap.
A rabbit's a good example. Um, it can't be euthanized, uh, even if considered a nu- a nuisance, it cannot be euthanized, but it can be relocated with, uh, landowner permission.
When it says relocated, it's outside of, the law actually specifically states outside of village or city ordinance, outside of a park or anything like that. And you have to have permission from the property owner who you're releasing it on. If you cannot come up with that, you have to get permission from the, one of us, the county officer. And if you can't come up with anything, we could potentially, uh, seek other avenues or, or write a letter permit for euthanasia of that animal.
And, and in some of these instances, um, you know, when we're dealing with nuisance wildlife and disease-related issues, if, if a person happens to be bitten. Um, the, the county health department is the, the go-to agency in those situations, and we work in conjunction with them in those situations.
Can I ask you a real quick question about the dog proof trap? Cuz if that's becoming more popular and it seems a little less, I don't know, scary, I guess, but.
That's cuz you can't, it's, it works on the same principle.
Yeah, it's just all hidden in that little contraption, but let's say inside the village limits, I get a raccoon in there. But I can't release it cuz it could carry rabies, who do I call? Is it someone from the state, the village, or do I have to contact a private?
If, if it hasn't bitten anybody, it's you as a landowner, you are responsible for carrying for that animal. So whether you release it or you euthanize it, it's, it's, it's your responsibility.
Am I allowed to release it if it's a raccoon?
On your own property. You have to release it on site.
Okay.
Or euthanize.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So in your opinion, do you think, if this is in the bag of tools that residents have?
And I can hear some people, why do we give you the option to release it on site? Say you caught it in the attic of your house.
Yeah.
On site is still considered your backyard. If you want it out of your attic, you don't wanna harm it, you just want it out of your house. Catch it, bring it outside, release it.
But if all these things would be in our toolbox?
Correct.
Do you think the, the box trap and the leg hold trap are, or your, if you had to pick two to get rid of varmints on your property, you would use?
Well, I live out in the country.
The first two I would use would be the foothold and, and the encapsulating dog proof trap. And this isn't probably what the most common one you'll see looks like. Um, they look more like, uh, a narrow metal cylinder, um, kinda like a, uh, like a, I mean, a Red Bull energy drink sized type bottle. Um, you know, they stick their hand in there and they just can't get it out. Um, that egg one's not as, as common.
That's the only one I could find. There, we gotta use all from our office, this is the only one of this I could, could find, that's, they're, they're not very, they're underutilized still at this point. Uh, box trap, now with raccoons only, sometimes you don't know, people don't know what type of animals are doing damage. A box trap is a good, what you consider indiscriminate, it'll catch a raccoon, it'll catch a possum, it'll catch a skunk. On leg hold traps, you need to know what type of animal you're going after to set what type of bait and where to set it at. So if you don't know what's causing your damage, box traps are, are your go-to.
But taking into consideration that damage doesn't necessarily have to be occurring for an animal to be considered a nuisance. Um, just the fact that they're interrupting your, you know, your way of life or your, your security in your home, let's say.
If they're eating your garden.
Even, even just the fact that they're, they've made a home underneath your deck, um, can, is enough to, to deem an animal a nuisance. Uh, so I don't want you to get too wrapped around the fact that they have to be causing property damage or something of that nature. I mean, if their kids are going out to school bus every morning and a skunk's just preying them, I think that's a nuisance. So I think, you know, we need to make sure a landowner has a, available opportunity to take care of that situation.
So, yeah, and the leg hold trap, you wouldn't, you'd wanna use that for a skunk? Um, there's actual hu- hunting, we have a hunter education class and trapper education class. Actually, trapper education class is free off through our website, if anybody's actually interested in some of it, you don't have to go out and trap. But if you're interested in learning what a cubby set is, what a blind, blind set is, what a, what a dive stick means. Those are all common terminology in the trapping world, typically is not more, not utilized in a urban situation or a nuisance situation, that's more of a.
Polly Creek Bank type of.
Yep, and here in Plain City, you got the Big Darby, fevers will become an issue at some point, it, it's just a matter of time. Uh, they're swimming up and down here right now, it's just a matter of time until they dam something off and plug a tile, that you guys are gonna be getting calls.
Did I hear you say you would not use that for a skunk?
Not preferred.
Okay, I could understand why, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
And you can catch different types of animals in different, so if the skunk just happens to walk in this one inch circle, they, they're gonna get caught in this. Um, just like you wouldn't use this to catch squirrels. If it's set though, and a squirrel walks there and gets unlucky enough to step on this one inch plate, it could be trapped by it.
Now, as I understand it, seven states have outlawed those leg hold traps. Is there any, are there any studies that those states suffer from higher rates of diseased animals or anything of the sort? Other countries have outlawed the leg hold traps as well. One of your points was that it would lead to a higher disease of animals or something along those lines.
What?
Is there, are there any studies supporting that theory?
Well, my point was if we don't, if we don't give people the opportunity to control animal populations, that it will lead to disease, there's no doubt about that.
Well, my point is in those eight or seven states and eighty countries, they don't use those traps.
You're also talking, we're talking nuisance trap, you're, you're, the studies you're probably referring to, and I don't have them in front, you don't have them in front of you to show me.
I'm asking you, are there studies?
It might be, you might be talking about a, a wild population.
No, I'm talking eight, seven states have outlawed the traps. I'm asking you, have there been studies between our state, for example, where the state, traps are legal, and those states where the traps are illegal, proving any of those points?
Federal officers, we're state officers, they're legal to use in the state of Ohio. We're not, I'm not versed in, in the history of the question you're answering.
I'm not attacking you, I just wanna know, are you?
I understand you, but I don't, I don't have, I don't have an answer for it.
Well, I think it's important, also, the Congress of that would be forty-three states allowing.
I'd be happy to get, I'd be happy to get you an answer, but I don't know that off the top of my head. What, what I can tell you is that we're state of Ohio officers, they're legal to use in the state of Ohio for both nuisance and recreational trapping, and that's, that's what we, that's what we have to know, so.
If, if someone calls me and asks me what trap it's, I would recommend that trap to be used.
Can you demonstrate the trap for us? I'd like to see it.
Well, why is that necessary?
I just wanna see it because my concern is the damage it does to an animal, it's been represented to it, it doesn't hurt.
Let me give you, let me give you a real good answer, these traps are not designed for me to put my fingers into, to show you.
I wanna just put a pin, I'm not asking you to put your finger in it.
Oh, we're not gonna have, the cause of that, we're not gonna do it.
Alright, did you have anything else to present to us this evening?
Would be free to, to.
Answer your question, you got a discussion later, you need more.
Yeah, if you can hang for a few minutes.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What about a child? Child comes along, sees that trap, what's gonna happen to the child?
Well, first of all, the answer is, is the child allowed to be there on the property to begin with?
Does that matter?
It, it, it doesn't, now, a lot of these traps are actually buried and hidden. So, again, you're talking probability, is the child's foot gonna get caught in that trap? Look how big the jaws are, when it's open, you know.
They make bigger ones, right?
They do make bigger ones, but certain, but the size limitations on how you can set them.
And.
Certain sizes can be set in certain locations, so say if a guy runs an eight inch trap, he's already committing a violation. We already have an, we already have an issue there, so preventing those types of traps from being used just means you're just gonna write him for another charge.
I mean, I, I, I don't know how to answer your question because I've never dealt with it. I can tell you that people don't call me on a, any basis, I've never received a call where somebody has had an issue with a child in a trap. I've never received a call, I don't know how to specifically answer your question, I'm not dodging around it, but I have no experience with it.
Okay.
You know, we have, I ha- I know people in Union County that literally put thousands of traps out every year, and.
And they live in the country?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But they also nuisance trap.
Okay.
In, in most cases.
And I've set numerous traps as a nuisance trap, and I've never caught a child.
The, the problem, I guess, I guess, you know, we can what if, anything, but the fact matter comes down to is there's regulations in place. That any responsible person abiding by the law that does this in the manner that's supposed to be done, those things are gonna be, uh, mitigated already. If somebody's being careless and reckless, they're most likely in violation of another law already.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's the best answer I can give you, I'm sorry.
Like accidents can happen, is there a chance that that child's foot is small enough at the walking age? You know, I don't know how, what size shoe a toddler is that walks, fits perfectly on this one inch plate to set this off? In the geographic area of Plain City. I mean, so there's chances that accidents might happen, but that's why we have size restrictions, so to narrow that possibility of accidents happening.
I just have one quick question, cuz I thought I read it somewhere, that, is there a posting, like a notice requirement if you have, if you're using them on your property?
There, it's a hundred and, and if you are running anything but a box trap on your property and you are not the landowner of the property. You have to notify people within a hundred and fifty foot around your residence. Can I ever remember remote history of that ever being? No.
It's, it's not something that's very enforceable.
So, and the landowner is sub, is not subject to that violation, so you as a landowner can line your property with these on your, your fence rows, and you don't have to notify your neighbor. But if your friend wants to come over and catch a couple raccoons, he is then obligated to notify, according, according to that law.
But you said you wouldn't use those for a raccoon, is that correct?
These, yes.
Yeah.
I wouldn't use this for a skunk, just for the fact I'm gonna have to deal with the skunk, wiggle around in a trap.
And most times skunks are caught in, in live trapping areas, and most people that handle them are cautious enough. If you put a blanket or a towel over top of it and keep it calm, you're not gonna have too many problems with it. You know, there, every animal reacts differently, you can't predict that kinda stuff. But, uh, in most cases, if you can get a pillow, a pillowcase, a blanket, something over it, um, as long as you, as it can't see what's going on, it stays pretty calm.
Don't shake the cage, keep it nice level, blanket over it, and you can transport it down that way.
So I guess with, back to the leg hold, if somebody continuously breaks the balls that are in place. Is there a time where you would tell them?
The judge would love to see them. Our, our cases unlike, um, our cases, you know, we know the judge, we have, I don't know the Union County judge, I know the Massachian judge, I know the Madison County prosecutor. He likes my cases, and I wouldn't like to be the guy sitting in front of the judge on a lot of my cases. So, if there is an accident with these and you are doing something wrong with them, there'll, there'll be consequences to that.
Are folks that use the traps required to report what they catch in them, is there any requirements there?
The only one, the only species that would be required would be a river otter, and the other chance of a hunter and a river otter around here. That being a nuisance situation is, is slim to nil, but they can occur, and they, I mean, they occur in the Scioto River, which, but Darby's catch, the Scioto, so one could come up here. But that's a federally regulated species that needs a sidey tag on it, so that's the only animal that would need to be reported. Fur-bearing animals do not have bag limits, they have season dates, there's no bag limit, you can catch as many of them as you want.
And that leg, the leg hold trap, um, let's say cat, is it gonna break the leg, is it going to cut them?
Uh, upon closing of the trap, it's not, in most, I mean, most times it's not gonna break the leg. Now, if, if, if there's, if there's, the person who sets the trap neglects to check it in, in the applicable period of time, which is once a calendar day, every twenty-four hours. Then, you know, obviously, the animal in distress is gonna try to free itself of the trap. Um, and damage can be caused while it's caught in a trap. It's not necessarily the closing of the trap that will cause damage, it, in most cases, it's what occurs after the animal's caught. Um, based on my experience, I mean, that's.
Most trappers tend to trap, check the traps in the morning, most animals tend to be active at night.
Dawn and dusk.
Dawn and dusk, so they're usually caught that night, checked that morning, typically. But the law doesn't say that to check in the morning, laws says every twenty-four hours or so, but that typically is what happens.
And they are required to have a tag with their name and address or customer identification number and so forth, so that the trap can be identified as to who set it.
So if this is, you know, stuck on a dog's leg.
Well, it's.
Should, they should also obey the speed limit.
Right, it, it's a law, I mean.
But if they don't, there's a law.
There, if they don't, there's a law to take care of that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, we have three visitors that wanted to speak, I'm assuming, on this topic, or at least two of them. I know Paul does. Paul, did you just, um, we're not gonna have discussion on what you put out there, but we'll hear it now.
Now?
Yes.
Would you like to answer that question?
Uh, thank the gentleman, I couldn't really uncover what I'm gonna cover. I, uh, some of you know, I've trapped all my life, ever since I was eight years old, and the only child that ever got caught in a trap was me. And some of them are hard to get out. As far as a kid getting in a trap, I'd say in the history of Plain City, there's never been one. So that gives an idea how important it is. I have made myself few notes, so I wouldn't forget anything. And I, I was kinda surprised when they brought out the leg hold traps, and that's, I call those leg hold traps. And you saw the one I had, which is a killer trap, that kills the animal when it goes through it. And as Sander knows, I do trap in Plain City. I've trapped live trap, I've trapped live trap for the last twenty years, never used a leg hold, because it's easier to handle animals inside. If I catch a neighbor's cat, it's easy enough to let it out, if it's in a trap, it's sometimes hard to get that cat out of the trap. Uh, as far as hurting an animal, I'd say in all the years that I trapped, and I trapped hundreds of traps. I probably could count the number of animals that were injured on one hand. And as I say, usually that was because I missed looking at that trap the day before. The animals will tide you out. Muskrats are a different predator, of course, you always set up, if you trap muskrats, you set them on a line, at least I do, so it's they drown themselves. They're like a rat, they'll chew the leg off and get out of the trap, so you always make it so they drown themselves. I find the state trapping laws very lenient, but very sufficient, uh, they work. You can kill a skunk in Plain City, but you can kill it in Plain City. All you have to do, if it's a hot day, take the skunk out and set him in the sunshine, and two hours later, he's dead. If it's cold, cool weather like this today, put him in three ounces of water, and by evening, he'll be dead. So, and then without squirting. So there's ways to get rid of skunks without, and as far as transporting, they're right, a skunk can only see about fifteen feet. So you just take a black bag or a cloth and just walk up the skunk, put it over the trap, and get him where you want. Now, while you're cutting, he's gonna be stomping, and that means he's irritated. But he can't lift his tail in a trap good, good enough to get his rear end up near to squirt, so you really don't have any problem there. I think that's, oh, oh, there was something in the paper about making this a professional thing. And I do this as a, as a combination to people in Plain City, they got a squirrel problem, a raccoon problem, a skunk problem. I go trap them, take care of them for them, and, uh, I don't charge. But if, if you make it professional, I'm gonna have to charge two hundred dollars per animal, probably.
That's going great.
Yes.
It's expensive, and a lot of people aren't willing to pay it.
And if a skunk, it might be more than that. And I, I was finding people the other day, I was talking about skunks, and we have a plenty of sc- of colors of skunks in Plain City. Everything from gold black to snow white, so, and it was a lot sellable, believe me. And, oh, I, I'll just tell you, some. a lot sellable, believe me. And, oh, I'll just tell you some story of this kind of site. Sometimes we get invaded, and I don't know why, but one week I caught 23 opossums at my house. 23. Can you imagine that? I caught 23. How many more is out there? Neighbor and I caught 32 squirrels in live traps. Half of them went to Marysville and half went to West Virginia. I know you do that, by the way. Transport them. But that was about 40 years ago. And I would say there's five times I may squirrel my yard now as it was before. And most of you don't know, but squirrels to me are a furry tailed rat. They're probably in half of the houses in Plain City in the attic. And they don't need a place to get in. They'll nail a hole in. And in my house, they lifted shingles on the roof, cut a hole. You couldn't even find where they're going in and out. But when we re-roofed the house, we found this. So, just a little. I think be very foolish to pass a rules to overstate laws as far as restricting leg hole traps or any traps as far as that part is concerned. Because like I say, we have nuisance animals. And if anyone privates the idea, raccoons are out right now are epidemic over the whole world. They're invading cities by the hundreds. And sometimes I catch 20 a week at my house. Now, I've had neighbors from half a block away from them thank me for catching because they had sweet corn for a change. They lose all their prop. Now squirrels, I don't know if you know squirrels, not really, but they eat everything. People think they eat nuts. They eat your apples, they eat your pears, they eat your strawberries. Everything. They don't care what they eat, as long as it's something to eat. So, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else that wanted to speak to this discussion? All right, Council? I didn't hear everything that we shared. Are you satisfied with what we heard? Have more questions?
I appreciate you gentlemen coming and sharing their information with us.
If you guys have any more questions, if you feel high in the number, you can call us directly, whatever you guys need.
You want some business cards?
Please.
Well, I have one other thing. I had Dr. Dean at one leg hole trap they got where a raccoon, I would dare anybody to get a raccoon out of that trap. Got three legs and 14 mouths.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
You already have my email.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I got. I'm sorry. You guys are just gonna share.
Yeah, no problem. Hey, would you like us to hang around or do you feel the need for that?
Pleasure, guys. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Do we have more discussion right now or do we just wanna go on with the agenda?
Well, that's where we are in the agenda.
We didn't report, we didn't report.
We stayed first, we're down with finance.
Okay.
But if you guys have reports, we, we're home.
Oh, yeah.
We don't.
Say that again.
Your reports.
Your reports, we honestly do, but.
And I have my papers in the car. I think I can come up with that.
See, we also did the whole business. So we are at lead traps and personnel finance.
Excellent. Okay. So what about leg hole traps, folks? Have we had all the discussion we need to have?
It seems to me that there's another side of this coin that we're not hearing, which is from Humane Society and folks of that nature. I mean, I think as evidenced by the fact that you wouldn't let me put my pen in it, there's just absolutely no way. I mean, this thing doesn't open more than that once it's closed. An animal is not injured by that. I understand the anecdotal evidence that they're willing to provide me, but the actual evidence was in front of us and they weren't willing to show me.
So you're saying they're lying, I've never seen.
I did. I do. Absolutely. There's no way. Did you look at it? There's no way.
I've trapped before. I've got my hand caught. I mean, it doesn't feel good, but I dare say I'm not gonna call them liars.
It doesn't open more than that once it's steel's shut.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't.
It's not rough.
It's not the feel-good moment of an animal's life.
Steel is more, is stronger than flesh or bone.
No, that's.
Yeah, you're done. We've listened to you.
If you're gonna talk about like, that nonsense, I'm gonna talk back to you. You're telling a lie.
There's another side of this coin. So the Humane Society has another side of this. And I think we would benefit from hearing that as well.
Yes. I have a caller in the SCRAM. He cannot be here this evening. They are a little bit more pro ethical, I don't know what the word is, pro life, you know.
So these guys are unethical?
No, they are for trapping.
Well, they enforce the laws of the state, so.
Well, that's true, but, and, you know, there's just different ways things can be dealt with. You know, and I would like to hear the other side of the coin before we proceed. And hopefully they can be here at the next council meeting.
Now, I didn't mean to call them liars. What I guess to be, I'm saying is, there's no way after reviewing that, that I believe that if they're using that particular leg hole trap, that an animal's not being injured. And I apologize for monopolizing the time on the trap. No one else got to see it.
Well, I agree with you. If he's not gonna let you handle it, I certainly don't want a kid near it. Especially somebody that lives in a congested neighborhood like Plain City where the kids just run amok. I know they shouldn't, but they do. And domestic animals.
Why shouldn't they though, right? And this should be a community where they can run amok.
That is true. You are right. That is right. But when they talk about trespassing and what's right and what's wrong, you know, we all ran the neighborhoods when we were kids. We were everywhere. And that's the way it should be.
And they probably trapped more back then than we do now, I would say. I mean, I would say the number of trappers I've gone down.
Probably, because that's when Daniel been living here.
I'd like to know what the law says about beating a dead horse inside the building. Because we have talked about this.
Yes, for months and months.
I'm gonna wish my hand after.
I better shut up. Well, you know, I'm sorry you have to feel the caring of, you know, the way animals are treated and children, of their safety is in need of your time and it doesn't compare to your progressive ideas such as women's suffrage and emancipation, which I was very offended by.
Well, remember the last meeting, Mr. Kennedy said, at one time, women couldn't vote and we had slavery until we changed the law. So I was saying, this may not be on the same level as that with this progressive comment. I don't know how you could be offended.
But it's still important to me.
Okay, well, it is important to you.
And it's important to Nick. And I would like to hear all sides. So if we could just table it for this evening, I'll see if I can get the gentleman from SCRAM here next time, who is a little bit more proactive of, I'm sorry?
Ethical and truthful, was that what you'd like, someone who's ethical and truthful?
Oh, no, you don't need to put words in my mouth, Sean.
I'm just asking if that's a one.
And I'm just telling you politely, if I'm finished.
We're finished with this discussion. Done. There's been disrespect. There has been unnecessary comments. We're done. Thank you. Somebody, or you've contacted SCRAM?
Yes.
And they will come to the meeting?
Yes, at the next meeting.
I'm super disappointed in how these conversations go. It's extremely frustrating to me because as adults, you should be able to come to a reasonable place of, I can live with that. I can, I'm willing to make some concessions. Let's not talk for an hour about something we talked for an hour about last meeting. Let's make decisions and move forward. If you would schedule that person for as soon as possible, that would be helpful.
He could not be here this evening. I tried, I begged. And he could not, but he said he would be here at the next meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. First down to finance, Bob. Would you please?
All right. A month or so ago, a month or so ago, we set up a financial planning schedule that said that tonight we would dedicate a portion of the Personnel and Finance report to update the rest of council on how progress is being made and how we're narrowing our decisions and recommendations for council as far as the 2015 budget. So there's been a document that's been handed out to you. It's a one-page document. It's titled Draft 2015, Rev B, dated 9/22/14. It's the over-under analysis and summary. And what we've tried to do is basically encapsulate everything here for purposes of discussion. When I'm going, before we start going through this document, I'm gonna give you just a few highlights and then we could take them by the number and I could show you how that relates to this working document that you have in front of you. We started our budget planning using the August year-to-date financial data to establish the projected end-of-year general fund income, which is going to be the basis of our projected income for 2015. We also used August year-to-date expenditures plus planned expenditures through the balance of the year to estimate our dedicated fund balances as of January 1st, 2015. Wages for municipal employees are being budgeted to increase between 3% and 3.5%. The police length of service schedule is being revised to be competitive with surrounding municipalities. We plan to use general fund reserves in 2015 in the amount of $424,300. Only 39,000 of that is really being used for recurring expense, day in, day out, operations that you see week after week, month after month. The majority of that, of that 424 is in non-recurring expenses. This includes three line items that are on our, that have been identified as a future need list. And just those three line items alone amount to $315,000 of the 424. The future need list has 10-plus items that can't be addressed in 2015. And the reason they can't be addressed is we do not have an income stream sufficient to allow us to address those. The two largest items that are not being addressed is a capital improvement plan. Each department has taken a look at their capital equipment, figured their useful life, what its estimated replacement cost is, and how much by-line item, a piece of equipment, should be accrued each year. So when the useful life is up, we have the money in accrued reserve ready to go. That plan says we should be setting aside $231,000 a year accrued for future capital purchases. Right now, our income stream is such that we plan zero. Capital expenditures for 2015, to the best of our ability, is coming out of operating funds and dedicated fund reserves. We can't sustain that type of situation for a long period of time. Economic growth is one solution, generating revenue for the village. Hopefully that'll come. The initial planning for the Uptown revitalization, there were three line items in our future need list that are related to that. But just the upfront planning of that, legal, zoning-related issues, preliminary engineering amount to $202,000. We don't have the funds, so it's gonna have to be deferred to future years. In fact, while there's not been a decision, it has been discussed amongst council that something of that amount, which would be a comprehensive plan, legal fees to come up with some new utility code regulations, and the preliminary engineering at that makes up to 202,000, but the actual construction and implementation would make this a project that would be greater than what the pool was. We'd be looking well over $2 million for engineering, pre-planning, engineering, and actual construction and implementation. And it's been discussed that something of that scope really needs to be presented to the voters to make a decision on, rather than council alone trying to take it out of income sources that don't exist. I prepared a hard copy document sets for each council member and they'll be distributed this evening. There's a document summary set which includes this document, which we'll talk about, and then also the income and expense summary format that we used in the April timeframe of this year, April through June when we passed the final 2014 budget. So you'll see a familiar format there. There's also a detailed document set that shows the each individual department's detailed budget by multiple line items. So those expenses are broken down by department. We've tended to summarize them here, but the detail is also in this package, this document set that will be provided to all council members. At this point, we have a tentative schedule for a work session next Tuesday, which I believe is October 7th, if needed. So if in the discussion this evening, or in your review of the document, supporting documents that we're going to share with all council members, is such that council feels that a work session for a little bit more detailed discussion is warranted, we've made plans to do that. It would come at a cost, but that's council's decision to make. According to the schedule that we have, we're shooting to have the first reading of the 2015 budget on Monday, October 13th. And that's, that's the goal that we had put together a month or so ago. The ultimate goal was to have the budget approved by the November 10th regular council meeting. And that would be the third reading, provided everything flows accordingly. Now, to move to this document, again, I'll walk you across the column headings and then I'll point out some notable pieces of information. The various departments that have planned expenditures are listed in the first column. Second column over, it says fund. That's the fund that you'll find on the accounting, the government accounting worksheets in Renee's system. So make sure that we do match with the financial records. Operating expenses, those are recurring expenses in nature by department is the next column over. Operating capital, and I think it probably would have been best described as capital and non-recurring type items. Then we have capital improvement accrual. And as I said, we, right now, if we had a capital improvement accrual program, we'd have to tuck away $231,000 a year. We've planned zero. And that's why you see that total is $0 in red. Total expenditures planned for 2015 is $4,115,000. The general fund income planned for 2015 is the next column, and that total is $1,511,000. And if you recall, we put together a formula by which to allocate general fund revenues to departments. And as you go down that column, you'll see how those general fund revenues are being allocated, first to lands and buildings, mayor and administration, zoning, streets. You go down, you find police department, and then we have general fund reserve. We have dedicated fund income planned, and this would be funds that come from sources other than taxes and income taxes, property taxes. These would be, in some respect, it would be zoning inspection fees and permits. It would be funding coming from the state for streets. We have funding for income source for the park rentals, $37,000 a year. As we go down, the permissive fund, which is a highway fund, $24,000. The police department levy looks to generate $320,000 based upon the auditor's forecast. The clock. The clock, we know that we've got an issue with the clock, and we're forecasting funds of $7,500. And that's based upon a concerted fundraising effort being established yet this year, probably sometime between now and December, to have the community assist in trying to renovate that clock. So we've budgeted $7,000 for that. The pool retirement bond right now is $157,000 income plan. Water sewer capital and ODA, this would be the surcharge that's currently on the bills of $152,000. Water operating income, $448,000. Sewer operating, $524,000. Pool, $95,000. And garbage, $230,000. If you take the general fund income column and the dedicated fund income column, you come up with what I have is total combined income. Total combined income from the sources I've just defined is $3,696,000. I mentioned a little while ago that we are going to be making up the difference from general fund reserve allocations. But first, I wanted to bring you to a column that says "fund over and under analysis." Wherever you see the numbers in red, that means the cost or the expenses are greater than the revenue for that fund for 2015. There's only three funds where there's going to be revenue generated that's not committed for use. Those three funds are $43 for state highway, $11,000 for pool retirement, and the $90,000 for the general fund reserve. Those would roll to the respective funds' balance as of January 1st, 2016. So we have the over and under. That's the purpose of this analysis. Wherever you see funds shown in red, I show how that's going to be addressed. Example is lands and buildings. We're showing general fund reserve allocation of $15,858. Now, of that, $15,000 of it is a non-recurring expense, and it's to put security systems in place for village facilities. Only $800 of that's really operating expense. Next, mayor and administration, we have a deficit of $10,000. $6,000 of that is a non-recurring expense. A little over $4,000 is a recurring expense. Probably the biggest recurring expense hitting the general fund reserve is zoning for 2015. And that is... There's no capital involved. That's basically salaries and benefits. And that's because of the very limited build activities taking place in the community. If there would be a subdivision come in and start moving quickly, or commercial development and permit fees and inspection fees were generated, it would generate... A good year could generate enough revenue where there would be zero need to pull anything from general fund reserve. But we're not forecasting something that we can't control. We can't control housing starts. So at this point, it's currently planned to go against the general fund. If you come on down the column where you see "clock," account number 2921, you see that we're looking for, at this point, is $48,995 coming from the general fund reserve for the renovation of the clock tower. The total estimated cost is $60,000. $7,500, we're hoping, will come from a fundraising activity that the village and UPCO are hoping to work together on. There's $48,000 coming from the general fund reserve and $3,500 coming from the dedicated clock reserve fund. Right now, that fund's only got $1,500 in it. UPCO, you might recall, has announced a $2,000 grant is going to be provided to the community yet this year, so I'm counting in that reserve fund $3,500 to help cover the cost. You recall, I mentioned that there were three line items in our future need list that we wanted to address in 2015. The first one is the Route 42 West Avenue intersection improvement. We've been advised that the original estimates provided to us by the state and Madison County of $150,000 probably was going to be more closely aligned with $160,000. So that's a non-recurring expense. We budgeted that $160,000 to come out of the general fund reserve. West Avenue, I can't remember the last time it's been paved. Village administrator has been talking about a need to update the surface on West Avenue for the last several years. We've budgeted that at $150,000. Our goal is to do the West Avenue improvement about the same time the intersection goes in at West Avenue and Jefferson. So, you know, it makes sense. We don't tear up, you know, something that's already been done, and we don't try to repeat something. So they're both slotted for 2015. As I stated earlier, on the zoning deficit of $33,000, if development picks up, zoning department revenues will pick up, and the department won't have to be subsidized by the general fund. We're recommending that $5,000 be budgeted for legal services to assist the village in negotiating and drafting a TIF agreement with the developer that owns the property along the Route 42 bypass. Basically, it's called tax increment financing, and there needs to be a development agreement that defines how future taxes can be allocated to liquidate the debt for infrastructure. So that's been budgeted. The... Let's see here. I mentioned the capital improvement plan that we wanted to have this year and each year to accrue money. Down in this section right here, you'll see how that breaks down by the various departments making up the $231,000 for capital improvement. In the document set that's going to be provided to you... In that document set, I've also included here that list of future need items that we wanted. Well, this is the group that we just couldn't see taking forward this year, but we are trying to keep track of it. And there's one item that's not even accounted for, and that's the renovation and corrective action needed to replace some of the brickwork at the Flatiron. The...
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial. Thanks. So the estimated general fund reserve as of January 1st, 2015, we've projected that to be $1,650,000. You've just heard me describe using $424,000 of general fund reserve for mostly non-recurring type activities. Our estimated general fund reserve at the end of 2015, we're forecasting $1,225,000. Again, it gets a little tricky because we're formulating a lot of our estimates based upon August year-to-date data in 2014. And this is what we would be using to take the preliminary 2015 budget forward. There's a point in the first quarter of 2015 where the preliminary budget can be tweaked based upon actual year-end results and become the final budget. So I don't want to concern you, overly concern you about the use of some of the forecasting methods we've used. I can say that there's been good logic applied, and we used similar logic when we put the 2014 budget together, and so far, that's proving to be pretty successful. So that's all I have. If there's any questions, I... Can I keep this up? I would try to answer.
Two minutes past the sound.
Sure.
Mr. Chief?
What, for chief?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? Okay. To get there, to cover it. So, Paul, did you say next Tuesday was the...
We tentatively scheduled a work session next Tuesday if needed. And if needed, we'd look for Sean to schedule the work session. If not needed, then we would look to take this document and flow it towards Paul.
So I think the 7th would be in two weeks, right? So it would be two weeks.
Is it two weeks?
Yes.
You know, for some reason, I thought if I'd budgeted two weeks in between there, but the goal really is... The reason I only gave you one document for the purposes of discussion is I know how we can get lost in large document sets. It happens to me all the time. So I wanted to try to give you a concise summary of what we've done, and then there's a little bit more detailed summary, the first couple pages here. And then you get into the actual departmental details. You will find that they flow from a departmental details to the little bit more detailed summary to this concise over-under analysis, and it balances to the point. And that drove me crazy.
Firstly, I suggest we do the Tuesday meeting. I think we've got a couple of things that I'd like everyone's input on. Specifically, we've talked about raises for the village. I'd like to hear what the rest of you have to say about that. I think it's an important topic, and I'd like to get input.
I got comp back service back on... Actually, today I just had she access to it, too. So that's our topic.
So, meeting on the 7th? Jim? Does that work?
Do you need me to pick you up?
What time is it? 6:30 or 6:30?
It was the hour.
Okay. Yes, schedule October 7th at 6:30.
October 7th.
So in that time, we could look over this kind of questions you might have, if you had issues about the raise or anything here, or we can talk about and hash it out.
Yeah, if you have questions ahead of time, just speak to us, and then that way, we can be prepared.
You'll note that everything shown here, it's listed as a draft. We've worked hard to keep good configuration control so we don't get different versions of our budgeting documents mixed up. It would take a decision by all of council to take it from a draft to a preliminary budget.
Good. Thank you.
Just in general, for everyone, when you're... If you have questions or anything, that's fine to circulate them so that they're, at least, they're on the table for discussion. But, you know, in keeping with the Open Meetings Act, no deliberation or discussion on them until we have the open meeting. So if you have a topic and you want to remember it, and that goes for anything, but it's generally with budget stuff. If you have a question or if you have an issue, throw it out there. Everybody save it. It'll be discussed in the meeting and deliberated on.
Great. Last on the agenda, we have a couple more individuals that want to speak to council this evening. So again, we're not looking for discussion, but Sarah?
I just wanted to bring up, last week, I did not know I was breaking the law by making a remark about a stupid skunk, because you rolled your eyes at me and went like this. And when I went outside, somebody I'd never talked to before says, "What did you do to them?" So they noticed it to you, when you were like rolling your eyes and kind of pretty much shut up. You've done that several times to me.
Well, I never ever meant to convey that.
Because I wasn't even going to talk last week.
Okay, can you just tell me what?
Yeah, and the only reason I brought up this skunk thing, I wasn't even thinking. But I didn't know it was against the law to speak if you didn't write your name down. That's all I have to say. So I appreciate it if I don't have someone else tell me how you're doing this stuff, because I already noticed it, but I thought I'm going to give her the benefit of the doubt. And maybe it's just me, because I have a...
No, I try to roll my eyes because I have skunks.
Wow.
And I know we have an issue.
But I didn't know that.
You did it.
And cut me off. That was the end of it.
Sure did not mean to do that, so I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I'm sorry I remarked if I didn't sign up. I didn't know it was against the law. Then I have one more thing, because I don't want to get mad at anyone. I don't want to get upset and scream. The one night I got so upset because you were going like this to me, when it was the discussion about OSHA and everything, quite a while ago. I do. I have a very good memory. Anyway, I also have one more issue. I do not want any Plain City police stopping at my house and talking to my grandson, ever, unless there is an issue. And I'm saying this now so that Chief Hill can't come back down the road and say, "I did not know anything about that," like he always does. Everybody here is listening to me say that, okay? But he cannot come back and say, "I did not know anything about that." And that's all.
I'd like to respond to that.
Go ahead.
If the police department receives an emergency call to your residence, we will respond accordingly.
That's okay. That's okay, but he stopped and chit-chat with my grandson.
So you wouldn't want a police officer to talk to...
No, I don't want them talking to him.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to put it direct about telling my guys not to speak to a youth if they're just chit-chatting with them.
No. I do not want them stopping and parking in my yard and talking to Trevor. Is that clear? I think it's clear on camera. I've asked this before, different things, and all I get is, "Well, I didn't know anything about it." And that's why I brought it up tonight, to make sure everybody knows.
You can report.
He said Trevor flagged him down, and I'm not saying liar, but I am saying Trevor did not flag him down.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. Okay? If there's an emergency, they can come.
All right. Mr. Medici.
I picked the wrong night to come? I really do.
Welcome.
I... And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I was asked to bring a few pictures so you guys had a clue of what I was talking about.
Thank you.
I didn't bring enough for everybody. I'm sorry. I think everybody has seen the Gary outpainting in front of my building. He was contracted to paint the front and the side. We are having a significant problem with the phone company. I don't think I've been treated that way by anybody, ever. Gary was having such a problem with them that he asked me to try to talk to him. I waited a year and a half for Gary to get on his schedule to get him to paint that building. The Frontier would not adamantly refuse to help with the wires that run literally less than six inches from my building. He can't get in to safely paint. And I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but his brother was killed by being too close to wires as a painter. So he is not going to go near any wires, and nobody can blame him for that. We spoke to Mr. Robert... I've got it somewhere here. Robert Chandler in the engineering department. And the very first thing he said to me was, "We are not going to move those wires under any circumstances. It would cost $160,000 to move them, and you are welcome to pay for it, but we will not do it." And we're only talking about a couple of wires. I don't think... And my response to him was, "We cannot be talking about the same thing. There's no feasible way we can be talking about the same thing. Can you please meet me so I can show you exactly what I'm talking about?" He said that he had already seen the wires. There was no need for him to come back out, and the discussion was closed. and the discussion was closed. It's just, it's a disaster. These guys, you hear you've got somebody who wants to improve the downtown, and I'm not able to. Now, from these pictures, you can see there's mortar work that needs to be done, the brick needs to be repaired. Obviously, the whole box of gutter is rusting because it has no paint on it. I had to, actually, Gary had to modify his plan. He was going to use a sixty-foot boom truck, leave it parked in the alley, and reach across the front of the building so he wouldn't have to drive on the sidewalks. But these wires that run down the alley are so low that he could not do that with a boom lift, so he had to get a smaller boom and actually drive it up on my sidewalk, which really infuriated me, because I don't want to pay for new concrete. And in the process of the maneuvering, he took out a thousand-dollar window on the front of my building. Now, for them to come back with a boom lift after this is resolved, it's six hundred and fifty dollars just to rent the boom. That doesn't have anything to do with the labor or the painting or anything, that's just so. The way I look at it, these guys just cost me six hundred and fifty dollars, sixteen hundred and fifty, and I'm not happy at all. And nobody here should be happy. I'm a licensed electrician, and I'm, these wires are installed so poorly and maintained so badly that I'm embarrassed for them. I'm embarrassed for what they're making the downtown look like. If you look, and again, these pictures aren't in great order, if you look at the one where you can see all the wires all the way up the height, all of the ones that block your view of the building are foam. I know there's been a lot of discussion here about moving wires. These power wires, you don't even see them, they're forty feet in the air. They're so high, nothing but the clock towers anywhere near them. It's the foam. These guys are, I have a hard time speaking because I get so mad. If you look at the first picture on there with the open cases, this wire goes down the alley next to my building, blocking, we're locking access, and then it jumps across to Mr. Troyer's building. All of these wires are wide open to the elements. So I talked to Mr. Chandler, and I said, "This is an opportunity. You can repair these wires, and we can try to figure out a way to relocate them so I can actually fix the building." And he said, "Oh, we wouldn't fix that, we'd just throw a cover of it so you can't see it." And as you can see in the picture below it, that big set of wires that turns ninety degrees right at the edge of my building, that is what comes off of this. So the biggest wire in that alley that's causing all of this problem basically comes down to my building and jumps over to Mr. Troyer's. It doesn't go anywhere else. It doesn't make a lick of sense. The one showing the front shows you how far he was able to paint, and as soon as he got to the wires, the whole side of the building's unpainted. And if you look at the shadow, it's kind of hard in the photos, but if you look at the light shadow between this wire, I can't even fit my hand between the wire and my gutter. Now, electrical code, high voltage electric, which he threw in my face, is you're not allowed to have a wire within three feet of a window, because a child is going to reach for it. High voltage, obviously, it's because someone gets hurt. If you go about halfway down my building, you'll see a big piece of plywood over one of the windows that's still on order. I had to re-brick part of the window up where a staircase goes. While I was up working on that window, I had my mortar in one hand, I had my trial in the other hand, I had my arm kind of wrapping around the ladder, and the wind had one of those wires slap me in the back of the neck. Scared the peaches to death. I'm lucky, I didn't get killed. You know what Robert Chandler told Gary to do? Lean your ladder on the wires. We do it all the time. Okay, this is the phone company saying, lean a ladder on a wire. Now, when someone falls off, if I was able to find a painter stupid enough to do that, or a mason stupid enough to do that, and they get killed, we know when a lawsuit gets filed, it's not just one person that gets sued. I would get sued. You would get sued, because he would land in a public alley, and because the wires are there at your, you're allowing them to be installed. Now, while I was working on that same window, I'm putting the mortar on the window sill, and my six-year-old is inside the building, and there's no window there. So she's watching me work, and we're having a discussion, father-daughter thing, and she says, "Daddy, can I touch that wire?" This is a six-year-old, wants to reach out the window to grab that damn wire, because it's only this far from the window. So again, I'm starting to get agitated just thinking about it. I wanted you to actually see these photos, and I wanted you to know what these idiots are doing, because I think it's going to cost everyone a lot of money. You want to talk about something that'll mess up your budget forecasting? You get a lawsuit for someone getting killed because these wires are run like this. That say goodbye to your budget. So my personal opinion is, and again, this is, obviously, I'm just throwing it out there for you guys to do something, is those phone lines need to be fixed. If you look closely in these pictures, half, at least half of the lines that are hanging there, blocking access to my building, are cut off. They're just dangling there. They don't even go to anybody's house. They're not even maintaining what's there. And if you look out my front windows, I've got this whole line of wires on the second floor, and they've got cables this big that are just cut off. They didn't take them down, they're not doing any maintenance, they're just making your town look horrible. It's just, somebody's going to get hurt, and I don't know what to do. I had to send the lift away. Gary took that amount off of my bill and said, "Call me when I can get in and work on it." I've got a lot of brickwork to do, and I've obviously got more things to work on in the building, and I'm dead in the water. So I came here to ask your help and see if you can push the right buttons. I think all the phone access, again, if you look at the photos, the one that shows the telephone pole in it, where it enters my building is this far from the pole. I put the entry for the whole building, you can't see a foot of wire there. So if they'd come up from the backside of the building, just like the power does, all those wires would disappear, because there's no, there's no reason for them to be there.
He shared that with me last week, and I tried to call the same gentleman. I had some difficulty doing that. We have scheduled a meeting with Frontier and with the general manager, and we'll see where that gets us, but...
Thank you.
Yes.
Have you considered inviting a representative from PUCO to attend the meeting? It might be a good idea.
If people, if people want to, you go, you go high enough and get their attention, and they'll do something, they'll be telling you, "Don't ever call us again."
And we've told them before, we watched the downtown, I don't remember how, but, probably three years ago, and knew that many of them are inactive lines and should be removed, but they don't, so we can do.
Do we have, I'm assuming we have some form of agreement with Frontier that requires them to maintain the line of thread?
Well, I'm not sure about that, so we're trying to...
He told me that he was allowed to have the wires there because they rent the space from Power Company, and as long as they're on the easement, they don't have to do anything that I say. They said they don't have to listen to me.
He was pretty basic, so, so I'll go over to the GM and maybe we will contact him.
I don't know if I'll be able to get PUCO, I mean, my meeting with the general manager is this Wednesday, and I'd hate to put that off to get there, maybe have a bit of a meeting with the general manager.
It might be nice to make a contact with PUCO and have a contingency, specifically a name of somebody that would be willing to come out if you can't get satisfaction.
They'll give you some suggestions.
And if the poles are leased by Frontier from First Energy, you might ask Mr. Sider to join the meeting, because technically, they're a tenant of First Energy, and I assume that there's probably some restrictions in the First Energy lease. And I'll yield to the attorney after that.
You'll have to also take a look at the easements, because usually, the easements would have some kind of requirement, where you would think that there would be something drafted in there that would restrict how far any type of, you know, electrical wire can be running from the border or the edge of the easement. Love to pull that.
If you contact him, I'm sure he can refine those easements. Thanks for the ideas. I'll come on those.
I was approached by a member of the Lions Club and asked if the village would considering, consider dedicating a day somewhere between February and May of next year as Lions Club Day for the village. They're going to be celebrating their seventy-fifth year of service to the community. And if you would consider that, you could reach out to the Lions Club leadership, I can't remember the gentleman's name. But it would be, the actual anniversary is in February, they think they want to do the celebration event. But a service organization that's been here seventy-five years, I think certainly deserves a little bit of acknowledgement.
We'll give that some thought, bring it back to you, date and so forth. I also want to thank the Union County Shriners Association for giving us that swing for children with disabilities. I had a photo shoot in Marysville last week and brought it back, so the guys have it to put up in the park. Do you have anything else?
Just, just real quick, I just want to touch base with you guys on the team before you, I think in July, about replacing the tree at Pastime Park. Just want to let you know the tree has been purchased. It's an October Glory Red Maple. It's a three-inch trunk, about fifteen feet tall, and Derby Creek Nursery is supposed to be planting it Thursday or Friday, and the plan is dedicated on Saturday after Runmore, when Mark's widow and his son will be there. Thank you guys for the permission to put that there. It's going to be just west of the youth building.
Okay.
I met with Mr. Vaughn Thursday over there, discussed the spot for it.
In the center of the trap?
Just, no, not that far over, just, just, just west of the water line. There's a, there's a metal T-post with a bucket hanging over it right now, because you want to go out there and see where it's going to be. That's all back in Mark.
Or be there at seven o'clock on Saturday morning.
Or be there at seven o'clock on Saturday morning.
And normally I am, but I told you that I'm out of town this weekend, so I can't be there, but hope it all goes well. If you want to have anything else.
Paul, you want that? Do you need to go in there? Yeah. Yes, you probably should. I thought, if you had that for me, legend or not, but yeah.
I kind of gave you a report for you, and it said since you weren't here, you would probably want to do that.
So...
I have a motion regarding your executive session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation.
I'll sign it.